School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, nothing at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
We're meeting tomorrow night.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. School building needs.
Uh, meeting tomorrow night.
Policy committee, Mr. Horgan.
Uh, approval tonight, you have a meeting, it's coming one sec.
Questions? Student support committee. Dr. Knight is not with us this evening. She, is she zooming in? She is not. She's not, okay. Personnel subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. Student reps, please.
Good evening, fellow school committee members. It is so great to be with you all again today. Fitchburg High School has had a very eventful time since we last saw you. We'd like firstly to shout out our Fitchburg High School students for pitching in and helping us win our tenth canned food drive in a row against Lemonster. Along with this, winter sports have also started for Fitchburg High School such as boys and girls basketball, ice hockey, wrestling, track, and winter cheerleading. So far, all sports aside from cheerleading have participated in their first games. Fitchburg High has also had their National Honor Society induction ceremony with over forty students welcomed. We will also be hosting our winter concert and holiday fairs before going on break next week.
Goodrich Academy has also had an amazing time since our last meeting as well. They have enrolled over forty students for their second trimester, which enrollment ends for the, for on Friday, the fifteenth. They're also working on their hardest to help the twenty-five families who have been requested assistance throughout this holiday season by gifting Christmas presents to their students. If any school committee members would like to handle any donations, please reach out curry@fitchburg.k12.m a.org for more information.
Memorial Middle School students are feeling very thankful this holiday season because they now have a new and updated library that was fixed up recently. Additionally, on December seventh, they also held a ceremony giving recognition to their high achieving students. Congratulations to all those who were able to participate in this event.
Long Joe Middle School has been getting into their festivities spirit by starting up their door decorating contest, feeding over sixty families with their holiday food drive, and selling candy cane grams to help fund their yearbook.
And Crocker Elementary School held their own canned food drive as well and were able to help over twenty-five families for the holiday. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson.
So, well done. Great report as usual, and I just wanted to recognize both Zoe and Journey. This is their last evening with us as student reps. Their term is ended and we'll have two new student reps come January eighth. So I just wanted to thank you for your reporting, your thorough reporting, and I really enjoyed how you captured everything that's going on in all the schools in the, in the district. I think that's really important, so thank you.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes, uh, do you have the time and date of the winter concert?
Um, I do not, but I can definitely look, oh, okay.
I have the time in my, hold on one second.
Six P M.
Six P M. Winter concert. Okay, moving forward. Approval of minutes from previous school committee meeting of November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. Motion made to accept. And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, as unanimous, thank you. Communications. Now we're gonna call upon Tara Skywalker Sweeney to come up and regale us with your, your tails.
Wonderful people tonight. Thank you so much for giving me an app that I relatively short notice, but as many of you know, I live in El Paso, Texas. I'm here visiting my family for the holidays. And at our last meeting together, I had mentioned that I had traveled on our Antarctic Science Expedition from McMurdo Station to the Western Antarctic Ice Sheet, out to Thwaites Glacier with a few pieces of memorabilia that are indicative of my time here in the Fitchburg Public School System. I think you know how seriously I take my role as a Fitchburg Public School System STEM Ambassador, so it's such a gift to me to be able to offer back to you a few tokens of my appreciation for all the support that you give the students, the teachers, the administrators throughout this amazing city of which I am a proud, wonderful, amazingly grateful product of all the support that Fitchburg has given me over the years. So if you will just simply accept a few of these photos and patches, I would like to highlight that Superintendent Thompson, if you might be able to honor Jessica Stadalski from me.
Absolutely.
Who is an amazing partner to me as the FBS STEM Director. She welcomes me back at every opportunity to interact with the students of which, when I was here last, I got to spend a significant time with Debbie at Crocker School, which was my elementary school, and it was just phenomenal to have the energy of the kids. And forever in all of my Antarctic presentations, as soon as I threw up a picture of those penguins, Debbie, the kids just go wild, and Crocker started that for me. So, thank you so much. I appreciate all the service that all of you have had and look forward to seeing you hopefully on my next trip home. And I'll just kinda turn these upright for you just so you can see them.
Yeah. Please. Great, thank you.
I want a picture of the mayor and superintendent.
Can we do a quick photo shoot?
Sure.
Yeah? That's great. Nice. That'll come up here at school.
Do you have any, you got it? Just be patient, that there's a, a figure on the floor.
She's amazing in the background.
Oh, I have no idea yet. And if I could just add briefly that it was this time last year that I was actually in Antarctica, and so for those in the school system who wants to re-focus on our website, our Thwaites interdisciplinary margin evolution website, our team is just getting back out to, to West Antarctica and Thwaites Glacier right now. So it's an exciting time for our science, and it's still just a gift to me to know that I got to bring this memorabilia with me out to one of the most remote regions on our earth, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes?
Uh, I'd like to ask you, what is the memorabilia that you gave? I can't see this. What was it, your, your?
Fitchburg High logo, the city logo, and then is that the STEM?
It's the STEM logo, and I took a picture with each of the patches while I was in the field in Antarctica and then mounted each of the patches so that each respective organization or person would have that token of my appreciation. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, just to follow up on one of the ideas that the student reps presented, I attended the National Honor Society, the best ceremony last week, December fifth. Superintendent Thompson was there, Dean Tally, and Principal John Braga, and thirty-nine students were honored, juniors who will be going here this year, next year, and the two new advisors, which is their first year doing this, Cassie Gerzett and Roberta McMaster did a wonderful job, and we're very proud to be part of the school district to see these future leaders being inducted into a nationalized society that requires a lot of integrity, the four principles of the National Honor Society is scholarship, leadership, service, and care, and as I said, very proud to, that this happened to the same students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? We're in the public comment section. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please go up to the podium and provide your, your words. Anyone? Seeing none? Moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So before I hop into my report, I just would like to recognize three individuals with us this evening who's last night, it is with us on school committee. So this evening, Mayor Dean Tally, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Horgan, this is their last evening with us on school committee. On behalf of all of the Fitchburg Public School staff and the Fitchburg Public School community, we thank you for all your support to the students of Fitchburg over the years. We wish you success in your future endeavors, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Mr. Hughes, were you able to hear that? No? Oh, I, I think we're having technical difficulties, I don't think he can hear. So, um, we did purchase a small token of our gratitude, however, it's on backorder. So, I will have to get that to you, and I'm horrible at gifts, so this is my fault, so I apologize. All right, moving into my report this evening. Unfortunately, I got a call today from Mr. Gaskin Gay regarding his report out to us regarding the naming of the track facility at Crocker Field. He had a family emergency this evening and he was not able to join us. So in your packet, you will see correspondence from Mr. Gaskin Gay regarding the naming of the track facility at Crocker Field. He will be here next meeting on January eighth to talk about this, okay? All right, so hopping into our first report this evening, I'd like to welcome the Director of Nutrition Services this evening, Mr. Dave Semenza. He will give us our annual update from Nutrition Services. Dave?
I got a little update over the last year, some information about Nutrition Services. Do you have?
I do.
Presentation.
It's coming.
Hold on one second. Just wanted to make sure.
It's here.
Oh, I didn't even change it from last week's day, I apologize for that. All right. We can go right into that first slide. So I wanted to start with sort of Fitchburg Nutrition Services by the numbers. From last school year, school year twenty-two, twenty-three, we served one million sixty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-two meals. To students in Fitchburg and then some around Fitchburg, which I'll speak to in a moment. So of that, that breaks down to over six hundred and twenty-two thousand lunches served during the school year, over three hundred and thirty thousand breakfasts, almost thirty thousand after-school snacks, over forty-six thousand dinner meals, and then another thirty-five thousand meals in the summertime. And we'll talk a little bit about that, I have an update on that in my presentation. Here in Fitchburg, we have seventy, seven zero Nutrition Services staff members, sixty-one of which are benefit-eligible guaranteed hours positions. Forty-eight of those, sixty-one, are twenty-five hours or more per week, and of that forty-eight, thirty-three are thirty hours or more. So we employ a good chunk of, of, of folks, the majority of which are from Fitchburg. We do employ some folks from some of the surrounding towns, which, you know, I'm very proud of that folks in Lemonster, Gardner, work for Fitchburg Schools Nutrition Services because ours is the best. We have seven school production kitchens, of the nine schools, seven kitchens, ten meal-serving locations during the school year, and sixteen serving locations during the summertime. The seven production kitchens are Fitchburg High School, Memorial Middle School, Long Joe Middle School, Crocker Elementary, McKay Elementary, Rhinegold Elementary, South Street Early Learning Center. Goodrich Academy is one of our serving sites, their meals are prepared at Long Joe and brought to Goodrich, we don't have a kitchen there, and we also provide meals to the kids at Keystone Collaborative. Those meals are prepared at Memorial Middle School and brought over to, to Keystone Collaborative. And the ten serving locations during the school year, the tenth is the Boys and Girls Club of Lemonster, we provide dinner meals every day to that program, all at no cost. Update on some capital improvements that we talked about at the last time I presented. We are scheduled to complete over Christmas break a pretty big project in the kitchen at Fitchburg High School, we're upgrading there to a new combi oven, we're getting rid of a very old, very outdated steamer and kettle system that are just, that, that just use a lot of energy. So that is set to happen over Christmas break, every time, we're basically rebuilding that, certain the, the cooking line in there, so we had to wait till we had a few days off in a row because we can't not cook. We try to get it done right before school started, but like anything, like any project delays happen. We replaced two dated, two-door reach-in refrigerators at Rhinegold this year, replaced two-door reach-in freezer at South Street Early Learning Center. All of our cafeteria point-of-sale computers that we use to ring in the students, check for allergies, all have been upgraded, some of them were very dated. We upgraded or added digital signage to all schools with the assistance from the technology department, and we turned an old unusable dishwasher space at Long Joe into a functioning additional storage space. Some new projects that are currently in the works are in planning stages. We're working on a new walk-in freezer setup outdoors, outdoors at Fitchburg High. We're gonna be upgrading Memorial's full serving line, we're gonna be pulling out the old dated serving lines and adding, going from two serving lines to three. We're working on adding a walk-in freezer inside at Long Joe, Long Joe is very limited with freezer space, so we're finally able to find a way to have a freezer installed there, and we're gonna be upgrading the ovens at South Street Early Learning Center. So, and back to the digital signage, huge shout-out to Eileen Spenny and her team, specifically Chris Turner, they were integral in, in getting that done. We helped them, but they did the majority of the work, great job from Eileen and her team and specifically Chris. So just a few notes on our capital improvements that we do. All projects are fully funded by the Nutrition Services through revenues generated by the meal programs and grants. There is zero cost to Fitchburg or the Fitchburg Schools budget, City of Fitchburg budget for any of these improvements that we, that we make. All equipment upgrades are made with energy consumption and sustainability in mind, using Energy Star rated equipment whenever possible, and all equipment upgrades are made with meal preparation and ensuring best quality meals possible. CEP, Community Eligibility Provision. CEP of the Community Eligibility Provision is a meal program that we have had here in Fitchburg, I believe it's been almost ten years now. What that is, is the program that, prior to the pandemic, allowed us to provide meals to all the students at no cost here in Fitchburg. We were approved again this year, and we are currently approved for CEP through the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, which is great. We look at those numbers every year and we're able to essentially tack on an additional year each year to our four-year CEP approval, which is, which is what allows us to provide the meals at no cost with the majority of the funding provided federally, which I'm gonna talk about in a moment. Massachusetts did pass legislation this year that, starting for this school year, all school districts in Massachusetts participating in the National School Lunch Program can provide breakfast and lunch at no cost to all students. So Massachusetts was one of the first in the nation to do this, and they've made it permanent, which is outstanding. Students in Massachusetts for the foreseeable future, or it would take quite, quite the legislation to change it back, will receive their meals at no cost, which is great. Our meal program funding sources, ninety-nine percent of the funding that we receive in our department is federally. Only one percent is state funds, and there is zero funds from Fitchburg Schools or the City of Fitchburg, which is, I'm saying this is a good thing, we are able to fully sustain our program through the ninety-nine percent of our funds coming federally. If we were not part of CEP, that would be significantly lower, and we would get more of our funding through the state. So the state mandated, state has a mandate for districts with certain levels of direct certified or economically disadvantaged folks in their district to, that they have to participate in CEP. So, which we do, we've been doing it since before we've had to because it's been a great benefit. But what it does is it allows less of the burden to be on the, the state of Massachusetts' budget, and it all comes federally. But again, our department is able to operate with all funds outside of the City of Fitchburg, so those funds can be used for other things within the city. I'm proud to say that. And there are some other funding sources, non-meal programs, for example, adult meals if, when teachers buy meals, à la carte purchases, we do offer things for students to purchase additionally, they're all, they all meet what we would call the Massachusetts Smart Snack requirements, like we sell Doritos, but they're reduced fat, lower calorie Doritos, not the same Doritos kids would buy in, in the store. All, and different catering events and whatnot, for example, the Rotary Dinner we, we do each year, those are all funded by the purchaser, so those aren't, there's no tax dollars for any of those sort of things, so. I did wanna talk briefly about summer meals, we have a bustling summer meal program here in Fitchburg. So their picture on the left, that is from one of our cookouts that we did up at Fitchburg High School with Jen Fisher and her programs, and then on the, on the right, that is our van, our, our, one of our two food service vans with our summer meals logos and, and whatnot, so it's not just a white van driving around distributing meals throughout the city, and, and that's liftoff our elementary school mascot who does visit the elementary schools during lunchtimes periodically throughout the school year, so. Some notes about the summer meals. Summer meal program, it is a federally funded meal program to ensure children and teens eighteen and under have access to no-cost healthy meals during the month school is not in session. Fitchburg, I've been in Fitchburg since two thousand and five, we've had a summer meal program since then, I'm pretty sure it goes back even further. It's been a wonderful program that we've, we've grown every year. Again, almost thirty-six thousand breakfasts and lunches were served at sixteen locations in and around Fitchburg where meals were provided at no cost to those, at, at those sixteen sites in July and August. And all the meals in the summer program are prepared by Fitchburg Schools Nutrition Services staff. We have a crew of about fifteen, sixteen that stay on throughout the summer. We turned the high school kitchen into sort of a, a mass production kitchen where we have, where we're using our vans, we rent some vans, we're sending meals all over the place, and we'll talk a little bit more about that now. So, breakfast and lunch provided at no cost to the sixteen locations in and around Fitchburg. So Fitchburg Parks and Public Spaces, Fitchburg High, Goodrich, South Street, McKay, Rhinegold, Memorial, Park Hill Park, Coolidge Park, Gustav Johnson State Pool, these are all sites in, public sites in Fitchburg during this past summer, which we hope to continue for next summer, all of them, where anyone eighteen or under can come and get a meal for free, no questions asked. We do a few other sites in Fitchburg or, or ones that Fitchburg kids participate in, the Boys and Girls Club, which is, you know, Fitchburg and Lemonster, but it's just over the border in Lemonster, we provide their meals in the summer. Fitchburg YMCA, the Kid Stop Daycare Center and Kaiser School, we provide all of their meals to their programs throughout the summer, and we receive that funding to support our program. There are some programs outside of Fitchburg that we provide meals to. Camp Lo in Lancaster, Clinton Park and Recreation Department, CAPS Collaborative in Westminster. Though these communities have the ability to run their own summer programs, they prefer Fitchburg's meal programs over their local ones, which I'm very proud of. So the kids in, the Clinton Park and Rec program, Clinton, I'm pretty sure does a summer meals program, but the Park and Rec program uses us for their meals, and we're happy to do it. However, Fitchburg and Fitchburg families always come first. We would never take on a site outside of Fitchburg if we thought it might compromise our ability to provide meals to anyone in Fitchburg, they are always our priority. So a note about the, the summer meal service, it did revert back to pre-COVID rules for this past summer, meaning we were not allowed to do any grab-and-go meals, which was difficult because that was a great benefit, that's, you know, it's, the rules of the summer meal program are set by USDA. Cities and towns in Massachusetts that are designated as rural who were able to do meal pickup, Fitchburg did not qualify, there's a list that the state would keep and Fitchburg is not on that list. However, we are, myself and other summer advocates, are, we are trying to get this change across the country. The grab-and-go, what we would call non-congregate meal service was a huge benefit during the pandemic, and we're trying to get that back where parents don't have to stay at the site to eat the meals with their kids, they can get them and then take them home. So, moving on, I wanted to talk a little bit about some grants and other nutrition-focused initiatives we've been working on. This, just a highlight page here, and I'm gonna talk about each one of them. Our fresh fruit and vegetable program for this school year, we received almost a hundred thousand dollars to provide fresh fruits and vegetables at the elementary schools. Northeast Food for Schools, we received over forty-three thousand dollars to specific, to use. Foods grown or produced locally only in and around Massachusetts. MA Fresh Grant for two thousand and twenty-three, we received, this is a great grant, actually, I'm gonna bring up some folks in a minute to talk about it. We received about twenty-three thousand, we implemented a garden indoor and outdoor at, at Rhinegold, the Rhinegold Community Garden, Growing and Knowing More Project, spearheaded by Rhinegold teacher Matthew Knoll, who's gonna come up and talk about it in a moment, and we have applied for FY24's MA Fresh Grant to expand on the program at Rhinegold and introduce it to the other elementary schools, and as well as provide some funding for some programs for Jen Fisher in the after-school programs. Another shout-out for Jessica Stadelski, I know she was mentioned earlier, she's, was a big help in writing this grant and getting this together, we're gonna find out any day if we got it, so. Nope, so really quick about the fresh fruit and vegetable program. This is an elementary school-only program federally funded where we are able to provide a fresh fruit or vegetable sample along with a nutrition education component to all students at Crocker, McKay, and Rhinegold. Fitchburg has participated in this program for close to fifteen years. Through the rules, some weird rules with this grant, fruits and vegetables must be served outside of the meal program, we can't do at lunch or breakfast, and they have to be raw or uncooked. The goal of the program is to introduce younger students to different fruits and vegetables and make it part of their everyday life. Crocker and McKay provide samples to all students as part of their health class. Rhinegold, we do it a little bit differently because they don't have, not every student has health class each week, and in order for us to be compliant with the program, all students have to have access each week, we do it through their homerooms. We do one grade each day, grade one on Monday, grade two on Tuesday, and so forth, so. Huge shout-out to the elementary health teachers who do it as part of their class and do a nutrition education component, and, and the teachers at Rhinegold as well because they let us bring a sample in the morning to their classes for the kids to try. And it's, it's, we do some common items, but we also try to do some unique or not-so-common items that kids may not otherwise get the chance to try, like dragon fruit, kumquats, omegranate, things like that, so. And adults that, when we deliver these samples, adults are encouraged to participate as well, as sort of a set example, set a good example type of thing. Northeast Food for Schools Grant, this was a grant we received, at this time, it's a one-time grant, but we're fingers crossed hoping to have it extended for future years. About forty-three thousand we were provided to spend on locally grown or sourced foods to use as part of our National School Lunch Program, so. Purchase, it, it's to purchase foods to be used as part of our program, grown within or produced within Massachusetts, or, I'm sorry, all of New England. Through November, Fitchburg Schools, our programs, we featured locally grown or made items from New England farms, with more to come, we've had items from farms in Massachusetts, Ward's Bill, Ward's Berry Farm, Carlson Orchard, Smith's Country Cheese, Autumn Hills Orchard, the Tugus Family Farm, Steer Orchard in Rhode Island, and Belltown Farms in Connecticut. That's just so far this year. Most popular thing we did, we did fresh cider as part of our holiday meal back in, in Thanksgiving, back in, in November, so kids, as part of their in-school Thanksgiving meal, got to have fresh apple cider from Carlson Orchards, which was very exciting. But again, no word on if it's gonna be continued, but we are working the, the different school nutrition group. school nutrition groups, we're lobbying and trying to get additional funding for this to continue. Next, I want to talk about the Mass Fresh Grant and I'm actually going to bring up Food Service Manager Jill Lucius, who some of you may recognize as my predecessor in my position, and Matt Knoll, science teacher from Rheingold. Matt spearheaded this entire grant, Jill helped and was involved with a lot of the planning and I wanted to give them the opportunity to talk about it and get all of the recognition they deserve for this great program.
So basically last spring, Matt and we all at Rheingold reached out to us about the possibility of doing something with nutrition services around plants and things that kids would grow at school, maybe an outside garden. So Dave and I met with them and from that meeting, we decided that we would apply for the Mass Fresh Grant. So I think we had what, like three days or something?
It was quick, it was a very quick turnaround.
So I talked with Matt, we all decided what we were going to do and we received...
$23,356.
So what we ended up doing was bringing in tower gardens and a bunch of different plant growing items such as lights and tents and just pots. And we did put out two outside gardens, raised beds. Unfortunately, we didn't really get a chance to do much with them because it took most of the time to get all that stuff done. I think we got the money somewhere like April, so it was, we really didn't have enough to do anything with the outside gardens. But we have since planned to go, so we're on the right path. But I am totally amazed when I go to Rheingold to see every classroom, the nurse's office, the principal's office, the secretaries in the principal's office, growing plants, just growing plants. The library is growing cantaloupe. So it's just, it's so exciting to go and see that. And Matt, the expert, I've gotten along, so I really wanted to share with you the experience that it's been this year and what it's planned out for the future.
Thank you guys for having me, I'm actually very excited. So just by coincidence, last year, someone that I knew became colleagues who happened to have some growing equipment that was taking up too much space in her garage, so I took her up on the offer, made sure I had the clearance and started growing plants in my classroom and just kind of wanted to see what we could do with it. As the year went on, we ran into a lot of issues and unfortunately, the bugs ended up winning the battle, so I decided to just kind of shut down the operation and try it next year. About a week later, I get information that this grant is available and there's about three or four days to get it done. Jill and Dave were amazing in helping facilitate and get this thing across the goal line. And now all of a sudden, we have this project going on at Rheingold. So I've looked at this in three phases. The first was the outdoor garden and getting the fence up and getting what we needed and as you can see, we were able to get actual things in the ground before it got too cold. So we got that one done. The second one was the high plant growth towers. So we have six, five are operational as of speech. And again, the hope and goal is that whatever we grow from that is going to get turned up and cured and cooked and fed to the families and students in some way, shape or form. The third phase, which is where Jill was mentioning that has really taken off, is the, in the classrooms and in the offices component. So we have eight tents in various classrooms, predominantly in fourth grade, and we're kind of just growing stuff as we can. My father made a solid donation to help facilitate the indoor component and it really has taken off. So as Jill mentioned, we're growing cantaloupe, we're growing cayenne peppers, we're growing bell peppers, we're growing lettuce, we're growing...
Green beans.
Green beans, purple dragon beans, things that we didn't even know existed. As another fact, we're growing gooseberry plant right now. And the only reason why I bought that is because it just made me think of schnozberries. Whoever started with gooseberry, so. There was a lot of apprehension when I was rolling this out to the teachers, I won't lie, because, you know, as teachers, we're always doing more, doing more. When I told them that there was no strings attached, just have fun with it, try to see if you can grow something that we can then turn around and eat, but have fun with it. It has brought such a life to the school and literally and figuratively. So again, my, you know, it's out, so I'm hoping to make my own sauce through this at some point, you know? And again, it's just trial and error, but there's no pressure. So, and, and just to see, as she said, you know, the school nurse come running up and tell you, I have a second leaf on my plant. I've been here 27 years, I've never grown a plant. It's like, well, let's go, man, let's do it. So it's, it's bringing new life to the school, it's certainly giving new component to science, which again, I think is sorely lacking. We all know that science is going to be the thing that's going to save us down the road and this is what got us to this point in the first place. So moving forward, if we do get approved for the second application that we went for, our goal at Rheingold is to not only focus on things like composting and not wasting all the food that Dave is helping provide for these students and then they just throw in the trash and then go, oh my goodness, do you know how much goes in the grown that strawberry or that banana? So now teaching them value of not wasting their food, that's what we're hoping to do next at Rheingold and then obviously grow food that we can eat, which we're on a decent path for. But also what we plan on doing is kind of sharing the wealth with the rest of the district. So I would say in the next phase, Rheingold takes maybe 20% of the pie, the other 80% is going to be spread out to the rest of the different schools, so that way we can kind of get them on forward and start doing some cross-school and cross-grade collaboration to just kind of, again, bring more life to the school in and outside. So I'm excited for it all. I feel like we've been this little secret quietly growing since last spring and now we're starting to actually see the fruits of our labor and it's very exciting, so.
It's great. I wish I had you with my science teacher. How involved are the students and what has their reception been in the different classrooms? Where, are they excited when they see something thrown out or what's their involvement in terms of taking care of the plants?
I mean, I'm not going to lie, I have enough equipment and I just said, we're getting our hands dirty, don't wear anything that you don't want to get stains on tomorrow. So I mean, they help, they're, they're literally in there getting their hands dirty and helping me, you know, we have, if we're doing well, we have to transplant a lot of times, we've got to go from little to big. Takes a lot of work, takes a lot of time, so it's all hands on deck when it's science time in our classroom. And other grades too, anytime we've ever asked anybody to help out in any way, shape or form, they are so excited. The kids, see, again, they, they were thinking that this was some sort of spaceship that had landed in the cafeteria. So everybody's excited about what it is and where we're going with it. And again, they can, they're bringing seeds, absolutely. What do you want to do? You know, my mom grows this at home, great, let's do it, you know? And then, hey, your mom ever wants to come in or your mom knows something that she can tell us to help us out. So again, just kind of letting the families, the community involved, kind of showing everybody that we can do this together, so.
Thank you.
Hello.
I have to say, this is probably one of the most exciting projects that I've ever worked on, I've worked on blocking. So it's just great. I think, you know, we're definitely moving in the right direction. I'm excited to see what happens at the other schools and eventually hope it moves up to the high school. And the staff is just amazing at Rheingold. Matt has worked tirelessly and, you know, they're also, for the next year, we have an educational component built into it with a partnership with Roman Places, so it's just good all around, just good all around. I'm wondering about weekends and summertime vacations, how do you handle the maintenance?
Good question. So for the water towers, those at a minimum, we usually need to do the maintenance every two weeks, so that covers us in that department. And then in the summertime, we just shut them down completely. The tents, same thing, we shut them down in the summertime. The vacations part, we kind of have like a rotation of teachers that are just, hey, I'll be here at this time. And again, it's just kind of this community of helpful hands.
Really, where I'm thinking behind that is going forward, perhaps an integration with some other students for credit, maybe high school students who are overseeing and...
Yeah, I love that. And I actually believe they have three of those towers at the high school. So again, there's, there's already an opportunity for us to do some collaboration there.
Yeah, because they can, we'd like to see them be robust and continue and...
So for fiscal year 24, the grant that we applied for to extend this, we actually asked for double, just under $50,000. And it's to expand it, you know, the hope is to start expanding it out more. Elementary schools in South Street are going to, you know, with, with the grant funds, start similar programs at Rheingold and the Science Curriculum Director, Jessica, she is going to start integrating curriculum around these things.
Education and maybe give the students an understanding of the younger people they're doing. I see a lot of assistance, but I'd like to see them have an actual job to do.
So the goal was, the goal was to sort of get this up and running and once we have it in place and working and now, now that we, you know, we have sort of a solid foundation and now we can expand it and, you know, to, to include other grade levels and to get some actual, you know, not that they're not learning with Matt now, but, you know, actual curriculum around these things. So it's, it's very exciting. We should find out any day now if we got this fiscal year's, the extension to this grant, so. Two, two quick things sort of related, the last one, the first lunch, School Lunch Hero Day, we do the nutrition services staffs across the country. The first Friday in May is School Lunch Hero Day, it's a day that we recognize the hard work of all of the nutrition services staff. And then on the next page, I'll, I'll leave this as my final slide, that is the team of staff at the different schools, most of them. And I, I just hope everyone here knows just how great of a group of people they are. You are never going to meet a more caring, hardworking, child-loving group of people. They love what they do and it shows. They make my job easy, they make me look good every day and I couldn't do it without them. If, I, I could sit here and name every single one of them and, and so, so we could recognize them all individually, but for the time's sake, I'm just going to give the entire staff up there in our department a shout out. Great, great people. And, and lastly, I do want to recognize Jill Lucius, she is officially retiring next So Jill was the director from 2005 and 2018 and was my mentor. I was her assistant director for that entire time. Jill left in, in 2018 to, oh, but I don't embarrass you or say something I'm not supposed to. What we thought was first step towards retirement in Arizona. And then, then the grandkids started coming and she's like, I gotta move back to Mass and asked if she could have a job and I'm like, absolutely, would love to have you on my team. So she went from being my mentor to being a great member of my team and I've been so thrilled to have her back, I'm going to miss her. I know she's still going to be in Fitchburg and I know she's still going to be involved with some of these produce and gardening projects we're working on. So I just wanted to thank Jill for everything she's done for Fitchburg, for me, so.
Hey, I have a few questions.
Oh, sure, and that's, that's all I have in a long time.
Something that you said with the box, your initial adventure with the box one. So that's a cool science tool among the grown, right? And that's in high school classes that we definitely take that on and have all the kids watch that. And also on the summer program, are you going to include the Keystone Laboratory this summer?
So we reach out to them every summer. The last two summers, we've been providing their meals for the last, this is now our third school year doing it. They have said they are all set, but I keep asking them and if they say yes, we are all set to, to start meal service in the summer there as well. Yep. We'll take on any summer program site, it just has to be at a, it, it can be a, a public location or it could be a private nonprofit location. It doesn't have to be an open site where anyone can come to, we can set it up for, you know, so there are some security concerns at certain locations where we can provide the meals to maybe a program that's going on. And, you know, I, I tell people all the time, if you've got a group of kids as part of a program, even for a week in July, we'll, we'll come and do the meals, we'll even take the trash out for you.
I think you're fantastic.
Well, thank you.
I'd just like to thank Sedexo, they've been a wonderful partner for what, over 30 years?
Over 30 years we've only been together.
I know going way back when I was principal at Rheingold and, you know, that they've been wonderful partners. Other thing, it started under Fitchburg, Fitchburg was one of three communities and maybe it was two that we volunteered to do the free lunch program and we were only, I think three were going, but I think only two did it and Fitchburg was one of the pioneers in the free lunch in the state.
And, and look at it now, it's, it's, it set the, it laid the foundation for all students in Mass and hopefully at some point across the country. I mean, the last thing kids have to worry about during the school day is if they're going to get to eat or have, you know, their tray taken away and things like that. It, it's, it's been a great win for school districts everywhere and we're thrilled that we've been part of it for so long.
So being chair of the CAPS Collaborative was no, was a no-brainer to get David involved in serving us during the summer programs. Thank you, David.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
I just want to thank everybody on School Could Now and all of you on Years Past. This has been really a very exciting career for me, not what I expected to do when I had out of high school, but here I am and I really have been a miss working with everybody. It's my passion to keep the kids fed and to give them healthy food. So thank you for a lot of meat served you for all the years, we appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, I'd like to invite our Director of Nursing and Health Services, Pamela Rivers, for our yearly update. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to stand in front of you and share with you the nursing and health services program for the district. So, here we are. So here are our professional nurses who specialize in school nursing. School nursing is a specialty, it's recognized by the National Board Certification, which many of the individuals here possess, along with their masters in health and education. They promote health and wellness to last a lifetime. So one of the things that the nurses do, and they're multifaceted, but one of the things that they do is they mentor school nurses. So we're looking to have nurses be introduced to the specialty practices from various programs. And the programs are from Fitchburg State University, right here in our neighborhood, and also Northeastern University. A couple of reflections from the students, so this is coming from them and it was wonderful to receive. The students commented on the nurses' knowledge, their need to not only provide direct care but also help families access community resources. So through their practicums, this is what they're coming away with. A few other things, they noticed that the nurses respect each student that comes in and helps them with their needs. So this is including their teaching, education on healthcare and just multiple things, health education indeed. The nurses are also seen by these students and many as welcoming and supportive, so therefore being there and meeting the students' needs. They shared a rendition of reaching out in real time to parents. In their interaction that they noticed was that the parent was coming in and asking for advice, advice for their child, advice on medications. I've shared before, as we evolve over the years, there's far, far less time of individuals being in the hospital, much of their time goes to the community, hence the education falls on those in the community, including the school nurses. So the students' takeaway in this experience was the recognition of the ever-changing needs and the nurses were found to be listening to this parent, offering support and providing information about the medication and the needed services. They recognized that some students come in and didn't talk at all, went about their business. Other students came in to get the break in the day and wanted to be quite chatty. The nurses were very welcoming to these students as well. They were very skilled at addressing the needs but also setting limits and making sure that they had a visit that was important, medical needs, social emotional needs, but also recognizing that the importance of them getting back to class and their readiness to return to class. So this was wonderful. So, um, this was wonderful to hear and receive, and I want to share that with yourselves. So why do we do this? We do this because we all truly believe that all students deserve to be healthy in both their mind and their body. All students deserve to receive healthcare and be educated in their healthcare, um, and in their healthcare practices, and that's what we embody day in and day out, in the schools and in the community. So tonight we'll further focus on, um, and meet the objectives of supports, collaboration, education, and various initiatives. So this is a very full slide, with a lot of information. Um, we'll start over in the top left, and this is a capturing of the entirety of last year, um, and these certain markers. So it speaks of our return-to-class rate, and what that is, is the students come in, they have their healthcare needs met, they're ready for learning and able to return to class. This connects directly with attendance, um, because we wanna welcome the families in, we wanna provide them, be partners in the healthcare, but also have them able to attend and return to class to be fully educated. Um, with that said, of course, there are things that go on. There are illnesses, there are injuries, there are dismissals for certain things. That's recognized here as well. We don't work in a vacuum, we work in a support group, so you'll see a notation up there, um, of working together, and sometimes students are initially visited by the nurse, they're, um, supported by support services such as guidance and others within the building. Um, it is noted here that the nurses not only assist with the students, but even the staff as needed, primarily with emergent needs, um, and advice, that type of thing. Students will come in, and they need medications for different things, so that's noted here as well. Some medications are definitely on a timed basis, and others are on a PRN, which equates to as-needed basis, so that they have their needs taken care of that way. Emergencies in life happen, we see emergencies up here, and yes, we work with our partners in the community, emergency access ambulance as those needs come about. Um, there's multiple systems that are recognized here, there's respiratory, cardiac, endocrine, and other procedures that the nurses perform. What you would, um, need to be aware of is anything that you would see in the hospitals and/or in the community, students who welcomed in, we have the ability to take care of their needs, and we, um, don't, again, work by ourselves, but we work with partners, um, such as specialists from UMass and those sort of partners within the schools, who is so instrumental. Um, it's extremely important to connect with families. I want to give a huge shout-out to our nurses who are amazing. They collaborate with the students' families day in and day out, with our community partners. You'll see up here, um, working with school groups, working in the community, working with the care physicians, um, so just a lot of graphics there, speaking about, um, what goes on, what happens, the connectedness, the importance of it. Relationships are huge, they build these very strong and caring relationships as the years go on. With that said, again, this was last year's, we are on par, as I'm doing our numbers this year, to meet these and exceed some of these connections and partnerships for the students. So attendance. Um, here's our resource from Attendance Works, and from their resource, what's important for students. And as you can see highlighted, um, that, it, it needs to be recognized how much that the nursing staff is part of this attendance and the importance of them being part of the, the school attendance, and the importance of wanting the students there and having them learn. Um, they, um, it, it is clearly stated, the importance of, um, the expanded access to healthcare, and it's healthcare within the, um, offices themselves, but it's also connected in this telehealth services. We live in a world where we're gonna look to for our, um, connected services, and telehealth is indeed gonna be one of them. I'll speak more to that as we go along. And here we are, speaking of our telehealth. The main point of this is equitable, um, care and access for all of the students and their families. So, a little bit more about this. There's questions in the past, you know, um, why this, what's the rationale for this? So it's important to note that nurses, um, no matter what setting they're in, they have the skillset of assessing the individuals and then recommending what's next. Sometimes the recommendation can be taken care of by the nurses, and they're ready to return. Other times the recommendation is, "This is something that needs a further diagnosis, may or may not need a medication," so that goes on to, um, physicians and practices. Um, John, if you can just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was trying to read you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'll go, I'll go. Um, so, um, with that said, um, the recommendation goes further. So now we're going on to recommending for physicians, whether it's primary care, whether it's a nurse practitioner, sometimes a physician assistant. Um, when this recommendation happens, the parents have the opportunity to be part of the telehealth services, signing up, and/or they can go to their own physicians, um, and we work with whatever their interest is. Um, what happens, as we well know, we, you know, need to see our doctor. We're not always able, myself included, to see the doctor that day, it might be the next day. We have to take time out of work to do this, we have to pay for travel costs, all of these different things in order to, uh, be seen by our physician. Sometimes, um, they're not seen in the regular practice, they're asked to go to urgent care, they're asked to go to the emergency room. That doesn't always equate to, again, the visit that time. And what we don't want, and have seen at times, is that the illnesses progress because the, the needs aren't met. The reason I'm so pleased about this service that we have in our schools is because this can happen in real time. We coordinate it all together with the families, the students, the practitioners. We include the local practitioners and update them, and we help the families with their needs. Now we can go. Um, so, um, again, equitable student services. So right now, the top part is looking at the healthcare, um, the primary care, um, or the physical care, I should say, and the number of visits, and again, you will see it's so important, the time back to learning, so the hours saved, instructional time back. It also, um, breaks down, we're able to go on from the physical health side to the mental health, behavioral health side, and expanding the services. So we work with our local partners, such as Lux, such as CHC, but we have amazing partners through our partnership with the Hazel Health Company. And what you'll see here is the percentages at all of the different grade levels, and the reasons that the students come in for visits, their families clearly are supporting this. Um, so it could be, you know, there's sadness, it could be a little bit of anxiety, there's multiple other reasons why the students come in, but again, they have their needs met, and they're ready for class, able to go back to learning, and this isn't like, um, taking away from their learning. Okay. So a little bit more about the benefits. Um, I spoke of the care coordination, I can't say enough about the importance of care coordination, and in real time, everybody being on the same page. It's not like, "Well, whatever happened when we sent them off? What was the next step in the healthcare? How are we working together with these folks and these partners?" We are truly able to treat the whole child, which is ideally what we wanna be able to do. Definitely increases, again, readiness to learning, their ability to be in class, attendance, all of that. It decreases hospitalization, emergency care time, families' time away from work, students' time away from learning, um, uh, sorry, um, healthcare costs, and, again, the absences. Um, certainly we're improving communication, um, all working together. The beauty is that it's not only available just at school, but it's also available to these families at home. So this is offered with services before school and after-school time, which is, you know, the family can choose what works best for them, so we're very pleased about that. Um, from the ASCD, um, support, recent reading, they noted that the students find mental health support with online therapy. So there's multiple, um, resources that promote the positives of this and the benefits. So other initiatives and successes, um, they've been ongoing, there are some of the newer acquirings that we've had. We have multiple health and educational grants that we work very hard on, um, whether I'm working with Jeremy, whether I'm working with Rowan, acquiring these grants, um, and have gone on for years and years, supporting the services. Um, so they include technology offerings, again, support our care coordination, they assist in our providing professional development for ongoing learning. Um, it also speaks to supporting the students' utilization of the healthcare services, and I'm super pleased that, um, students connect with the nurses, and their range of time with these services are from anywhere from 85 to 95% and above. Um, again, super important that we build and maintain those student and family relationships and engagements, um, care coordination, the health connections, the participation and partnership in health offerings within the schools and certainly within our community partners. And then, um, there's a huge piece also, which is based around safety. So we wanna support the school's safety and the belongingness of students and the families. So that's another piece that we do. I thank you very much for your time. I entertain any questions you might have.
I'm impressed.
Thanks.
In terms of not just putting a band-aid on a cut, there's a lot...
Oh, gosh, no.
...that goes on with what the nurses are responsible for, and that they're there when the students need them, and that's good to know.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
I think I'm impressed by the return-to-class rate of 91.10%. That's, that's great.
Yeah, it really is. It is, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
All right, it's a pleasure.
Thank you to your team for all they do for our students. Thank you. All right, moving on. Um, on the, at the last, uh, school committee meeting in November, I proposed the elimination of user fees. Uh, this evening, we're happy to answer any additional questions you may have, and I invited our athletic director, Todd Robbins, uh, here tonight to, um, answer any questions you may have. Uh, so, um, it is an action item this evening, it's the first action item on our list, to approve my recommendation to eliminate user fees for student athletes. So, Todd is here. Do you have any questions for Todd?
What's the price tag on that, Todd?
$50 per sport.
So overall?
Overall total? It would be about $15,000 based on the, what we were already waiving.
And how would you make that up?
Budget process.
Budget process, yeah, we'll have to move some funds around to support that, but it's not a lot.
No, yeah, okay.
And I think at the last meeting, I think it was, uh, Mr. Roach, you talked about that we already provide waivers for a number of students, I mean...
At least two-thirds, if not...
At least two-thirds, if not more.
If not quarters, yeah.
Yeah. No. Well, what is, what is it used for, the 15 grand?
So user fees, the genesis of them originally was to, to make up, as, as Mr. Stevens made note of at the last meeting, they were to make up budget shortfalls. When athletic budgets got cut in the early 2000s, this was one way to make up for those shortfalls. Um, I think for us, in making this move, it's going to attract, uh, people to this district, uh, in, in reality, because if they're choosing, you know, they're considering their school choice options, they can come here and participate in athletics as part of the curriculum, where it belongs, or they can consider, you know, going next door, or next door, or next door, and pay the exorbitant user fee that they're asking for.
Good.
We have a budget item now for athletics, line item, which we hadn't had in, for a while. Uh, our athletic parents are all raising money just to keep supporting, and that's not the right way to go.
Yep. Any further questions for Todd?
I think it's something that we should do, and, um, if, if possible, we make a motion to vote on...
Right now?
The action item right now. Make a motion to approve action item 23, 325, approve the superintendent's recommendation to eliminate user fees for student athletes.
Second. Motion made second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support of athletics, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right, this evening, moving on, we have two donations. So the first donation is from Tracy D. Salvatore to the after-school program. Tracy donated beating materials to the after-school program with an estimated value of $350. The second donation, and I apologize, this is late, it came in after our last, um, meeting in November, it's for the 95 Thanksgiving baskets donated to the City United, from the U-Sid, City United Church. The estimated, uh, value of both of tho, of the 95 baskets is $4,275. And then we have two grants this, this evening. Uh, the first grant to submit is the Mass Fresh Grant in the amount of $49,298. These funds will be used to build capacity to grow or purchase local grown or, uh, produce ingredients, prepare nutritious-from-scratch meals, and educate students about the food system. And then the next grant is the Genocide Education Grant for $40,000. These funds will be used to provide professional development for teachers in partnership with Salem State University, purchase high-quality curriculum materials, engage our students and teachers in collaborative efforts, efforts such as regional synopsises, and then engagement in, um, experimental learning opportunities such as hosting a guest speakers. So those are the two grants for, uh, submitted this evening. And then, some policy items this evening. Aiden and I can continue if that's okay with you?
Please.
All right. So our first, uh, policy up, uh, this evening is policy number 5217.01, Participation in High School Interscholastic Athletics and Extracurricular Activities. This policy is a revised policy this evening. Our current policy is not in compliance with the MIAA, so this revision ensures our compliance with Rule Number 58 in the MIAA handbook. The changes include, students must pass at least two out of four required major courses in each academic period. To be eligible for the fall marking period, students are required to have passed and received full credits for the previous academic year, the equivalent of four traditional year-long major English courses. There is no minimum GPA, and there is no minimum of credits. That's, uh, for the first policy. The second policy is policy 5118, Collection of Pupil Information Policy. This is also a revised policy. There was a sentence change to allow parent guardians to opt out, as opposed to opting in to take surveys. And then the last policy, number 5103.01, Enrollment of Children of Personnel Policy. This is a new policy. As you all know, we are not allowing school choice in grades K to 8 this year, so we wanted to put this policy in place to recognize our staff and allowing them to bring their children to our school system. This policy will allow us to attract talent to the district by giving educators an opportunity to, uh, their students to attend school in our district. Uh, just some quick highlights on this policy. The superintendent has the right to make the final, uh, decision regarding acceptance. Students must request in writing, um, I'm sorry, staff must request in writing, uh, to me, the superintendent. Students will be assigned to a school base on, on, the school based on space availability. Staff are responsible for transportation of the students, admitted under the policy, and students of staff will not be allowed to remain in the district if the staff member ceases, uh, to be employed by the district. So those are the three policies up for approval this evening.
Is there a, a desire to bundle these, um, action items?
Yes.
So 23-3, do we vote on that?
Yeah. Make a motion to bundle action items 23-326 through action item 23-332.
Right.
Second.
Motion made second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We should add this, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the bundle?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the bundle, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No executive session at this time, but motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
I adjourn.